I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Brad Ryaki here. Mayor Pro Tem Bob Tannis?
Here.
Commissioner Tom Glau?
Here.
Commissioner Stu Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Joe DeLuca?
Here.
Commissioner Al Ramirez?
Present.
Commissioner Luke Stempian?
Here.
City Manager Craig Horton?
Here.
Our attorney is not here, and we have Fire Chief Keith Kozakar?
Here.
Police Chief Brett Selfie?
Here.
Sergeant Sean Leathers?
Here.
Code Enforcement Officer Carl Charles Kumijar?
Here.
And Waitressing Professional Planner Caitlin Haynes?
Here.
Thank you. Great. You've cast a thousand. So anyway, are there any additions to the agenda?
There are a couple things we're gonna talk about, but I'm gonna talk about them at City Manager.
Okay, alright, so no formal additions. Okay.
I move approve the jetty rental.
Okay. Um, favorit?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, any votes? Okay, so we're going to approval of consent agenda items. Do you have any questions for Craig or any other issues?
I move approve consent agenda. I'm putting in a payment of one million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Roll call please. Davis?
Yes.
Tannis?
Yes.
Glau?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
DeLuca?
Yes.
Stempian?
Yes.
Yaki?
Yes, thank you. Great. Um, moving...
Stu, um, moving on to citizens from the floor. Is there anyone who would like to speak? We are going to set a three-minute timer, and we would ask that you direct all of your comments to me. Anybody who'd like to speak this time? Okay. Um, so we do not have a guest speaker tonight, is that right? Okay. So our department head is Keith Kozakar.
Hey, do you want me to stand up for you?
Sure, it'd be great.
Cool. Yeah, I want you guys on your table, a key sheet for reminding us basically, so a couple of covers so you can follow on if you want. We have some laundry this one. Couple things. Right now, my eighteen members were trained. Two guys graduated from fire academy this spring. They both successfully passed the class. They're still on probation, because we usually keep them on probation for a minimum of six months. So they get done today, so we're gonna have them done with that, and we'll go ahead and kick them off probation, and then we're good to go for this everything. I've got one new additional train fire required that's going through the hiring process right now. He was trained at OCC. He's actually going through his medical stuff right now. He's on leave right now for his military, but he will be back and he will finish that up in a week or two. So looking forward to bring him on board as well, so that would be nineteen. One of my members completed fire instructor one, which you need to be able to move on in your officer service. He's currently in the process of being his officer certification going as well, and that's been working. We just need to kind of notch it up a little bit, so now we'll have somebody else that's actually officer training. I'm trying to get a few more people in the same boat, so we have a full people, full from going forward. I got one member that completed his ICS three and four hundred, which you need to have if you're gonna do anything with team on ITC certification, that you need more people to handle. So we gotta make this a common paper that has to be filled out in order for you to follow up and be the funding. So more and more people have a dead end, as we are. And I've also gotten one additional CPR instructor now as well, that's Trevor Romo. And so he and I are CPR doctors. We are a friend of Satter right now, we're in the process of trying to figure out when to start operating classes. I think people, so it's something we'll bring to the city or... Response standpoint, our call line this year right now is, as of yesterday, was a hundred and eleven calls this year. So we're probably halfway through the year. That's gonna put us on half of about two hundred calls at the rate we're going, which is up about thirty or forty calls from last year. And we'll say one thing, I do have a great response for day and night. I'm getting eight to ten fire requires showing up in just every hall, which is probably one of the best in the county, excluding here. We're in part with them, so I'm really best in the county. We consider I've got pretty much a fit, it's all about departments. That's right. One of the things that's increased for right time is we're running out of vehicle accidents. I think PE's starting to get that now too. Because we're not afraid to go out, we use our truck supply, because we have a bunch of everybody, but we're not afraid to shut the roads down, give these guys the support in areas of the support and protection that they need. So I know now even the counties they used to was, and the state as well, because we will deal with them on sixty hundred and went back to twenty-one. We did negotiate a new contract with the township, so basically the thirty percent of our budget, thirty percent of our calls. So that's the process, we'll go through that. One thing I want to point out, we'll talk about it a little more again later, is our equipment and vehicles are back and full, and back and full operating service. So I've got every piece of equipment we have is now operational and actually ready to go over, actually using this going time. So I want to keep it that way. And we have a new engine coming, and that finished right now, it's just getting off for early days of bill. We got some guys coming out in November to do a bill review, and we're expected to take delivery of that right now looking after July next year. Get delivery of that for you, and so that's a couple of peers that's coming from Edmonton, Wisconsin, so looking forward to getting that. So what we're trying to do is use our current engines a little less and start using a ladder board. And I want to take a load off the current engines, because I don't want to spend any more money in that truck than I have right now, so I want to kind of let that one sunset. It's like when we're doing operations, I just don't want to have to move the research in that truck. From a fire ordinance inspection standpoint, we're currently doing some limited life safety fire inspections. I've been helping out places part of that, and we've been doing some of that. And at this point in time, I've got a new ordinance that's actually drafted, it's legal lawyers, and I'm planning on getting that into one of the next meetings. You guys start to reprocess. And that will adopt, it'll adopt fire codes from specifically the International Fire Code, twenty twenty-four ruling, that will start adopting for city criteria, and that will give authority to go out and start inspecting to fire code. And we also adopt a couple of fire codes, the National Fire Protection Association adopted that. So I'm kind of looking forward to getting that behind us, and that then starts our ability to do inspections. And this year, we did put money in the budget to support doing a bulk of buying some things that we need to get that going, plus handle some payroll issues. Activities, this year, we've actually supported the Hispanic Festival, they have a booth there. We were at the Liberty Festival, the Fantastic Festival, we had a booth there, we had some events there. We spent last five days, six days, whatever it was, at the Eastern Michigan State Fair. We had a booth there for every day, and we also supported three of the events with coverage as well as the L-1 one night, ANFO one night, and Google one night as well. So all in all, well, we had some weather issues on Thursday, but kind of like that. But other than that, it went well also. And then on top of that, we get to fill the booth this year. The two nights we did fill the booth, we actually raised over six thousand dollars, and that's slated to go around B-Boy for medical bills. So we're in the process of getting that converted to a check, a cashless check for him. And I gotta follow up with he and because he said the lions are gonna kick him too. They were gonna take some of the tips that they had from the beer tent, and they were gonna take a portion of that, and also they talked about donating that to the same cost. I gotta follow up with him and see what he's gonna bring to party, if he wants to accept a check. So that was good. First night filled the booth, we actually got a forty-two hundred dollars, which is unheard of. Second night, not so good. We're kind of happy to do the same people, some of the same people. And the night we got on was cool, just that was on fire, it was cool this night. We're in the process, we gotta pick up fire prevention in the fall. We're in the process of getting that going. And then we're also gearing up for our summer tests, and we're testing behind us. We have summer tests in America. And then the other thing, as I'm saying, a car wash that we have, which was success, we did pretty well in each one of them. And we'll find out doing more of those next year, we're just sort of timed around, we've got a student, we're working out. Couple of things I want to cover in the update is future challenges. Our building is probably, believe it or not, is like five years old. So now it's five years, we're starting to find things like, gee, their repair system needs to be certified. So now we gotta come through, we gotta start doing inspections, and maintenance on that, that's some, I've got some things we have to review with Craig on. It's gonna cost a little money, a thousand dollars in inspection, that they need to be certified, and it may have requirements. And then we also have some humming issues, we have certain kind of safety that quote, stuff like that, we also gotta maintain this on. So we're at that point, the building is now starting to see that, you know, it's starting to cost, so it's gonna make sure I manage that. I've got like a vehicle repair replacement, we are fighting a lot of the costs on both sides. They're expensive to repair, there are very few opportunities to get them repaired now, because they gotta use emergency vehicle certified professionals. And actually, the one we've been using is struggling with some powders, so we've been using other cloths right now. We do get that done. And then, like I said, there's also very limited amount of technicians out there that can do the work. The point we're keeping to talk to the wonderful suppliers, whether they're entertaining, getting one of the guys trained, and they're just gonna be the technicians now. When it comes to vehicle repairs, there's opportunities for chassis stuff, the non-emergency stuff, like maybe you talk to some emergency pumps, fighters, emergency equipment, and ask to become a trained technician and certified. To the point, we don't even want to talk to anybody, because we don't want to pay a lot of building on some of that stuff. Recruit retention is always an issue. We are recruiting for the story. And I'm also trying to make sure that as I recruit people, that they want to, we're gonna fit in, we do that really well so far with that. We're also looking at expanding our reach a little bit, getting some other activities around there into the bulk center, into a couple other areas, to see if we can help get some more, get some more enthusiasm, get some interest around it. I know a couple of departments, and there's a whole, there are departments in the west side of county that started this order program. I'm not there yet, but they're third, they're third, they're Alpha, Addy, Better Ward, and I think we're pure of all joint forces on that, trying to get people interested. Everybody's sort of researching right now, so it's a common problem. So right now, the best thing I can do is keep and retain the people I have as a start, and that's the best thing I can do, and then try to bring people in as I can give them. And average firecracker now, by the time you get them in the door, it's usually about a two, over two years span before you even train them and operational. And then there's a cost associated with doing that too. The class costs isn't bad, but the gear costs, I mean, thanks to ninety-six, seven thousand dollars a person to get them in the door. So we're gonna... The other challenge I've had in the last year, and we're working on some folks on, is managing the number of events we could pull into. Every week, I get somebody calling me going, can you guys come do this, and you come to that, and lately I've had to say, no, I can't do it this year. But give me a favor, give us a heads up earlier, what you guys are thinking, and as we put together some of the spring fall, some of the spring fall, some of it, we can start looking at how to best help you guys out. I can't do everybody, but we can certainly do some more than what we're doing right now. And the other one is obviously keeping up with the training and certification updates for resources for people. That's the biggest thing is we have modules we have to get in, we have training we have to do, and we have certifications we have to keep. So it's getting everybody, and most have kind of doing it on their own time to get that done, and it's basically fine. So that's my biggest challenge, because right now we're working on it. Any questions, Mel?
No questions, but I've got a couple comments. I will tell you, I am so impressed with your professional department and your leadership of that department. I think it's amazing, and the fact that you've been able to continue to add more firecrackers. I will tell you, I was in an event this last weekend, and I talked to a firecracker from Carroll. And he was talking about the numbers that they have, and the morale in their department, and those kind of things. And I found myself thinking, I am so proud of what our department here is doing, and as I said, the professionalism is just great. As far as the Eastern Michigan State Fair, that was really fun to see your guys out there, and to be able to talk to them, and they were, you know, out there talking to the public. That was wonderful. As far as the car wash, my car hasn't been that clean in a long time, so thank you.
Congratulations, Michigan Stadium.
Thank you, thank you. For being very careful with Michigan Stadium, yes, thank you. So anyway, just a heads up, great job.
No, it's, these guys are just the secret guys, you know, they are a hundred of guys that got to open plates. And I go to another department, and it's one bad, you know, the wrong thing down, and the idea, I don't want to go to those departments. And a lot of departments are fighting that right now. Again, I, so I feel very blessed to have you here.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Maybe on your car wash, you should have a challenge, Michigan against Michigan State, see who can get more people in there for a car wash.
We brought them both.
If I was volunteering on a toilet sticker, right?
No, there was, we brought them both. Okay, so next we go to unfinished business, D and W building. Bob, you're up.
What? Few little surprises, nothing that we couldn't handle. We know the bond boards had been fixed around the building, we did that. This morning, we ripped out the asphalt on the west side, because it was eight inches higher than the cement inside the building.
That's not good.
That's not good, so we ripped it up. And then one of our openings for the door did not meet our specs, so I had to have an engineer to put LBLs on the tops, so I could cut one of the main poles out and mount it over, and so carry the weight of the, we got that engineered. Threw me across, they allocated, so we were good to roll on that. Other than that, today, we start putting softer material on the building. The steel comes tomorrow, so by next week, it all looks a whole lot different.
It already looks a whole lot different.
It's different now, it's just a good hole. We got everything all framed in that house.
Great. Alright, moving on to nine B, the fire truck repair.
Oh, yeah.
You're back up.
I am too. Yeah, I'll kind of walk through this, I go from back, yes, when you take, so, I'll just kind of walk through this and try to like, a couple of things. I spent a lot of time with our, our parking back for two minutes, probably, basically, we took it down there, got older, we came back with a call of, what was that, forty-one thousand, forty-one, seventy-seven, that was the original call, and then this comes to the bottom, but they did, you know, it was up to buying more things. We got approved in here for fifty thousand dollars, that was a contingent we put up, and that's what we were trying to manage it to. And we were doing okay, and so I brought in, basically, I had a truck, I said, why you guys have got a truck, instead of us getting it back here, why don't you guys go ahead and have the guys who do non-instructive testing, which is a five-year, every five years you have to do it, and we were out of date. So we were out of date on that truck. So they came in, they did the non-instructive testing, they found additional issues, which is not new. And then when they found those additional issues, and our car got back into it, that's where over six thousand dollars was, and that's came up as well as some twenty-five hundred dollars for testing. It's been having the original quote, because they just quoted repair without. So that's where, that's where that fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars came from. So I did, a couple of things I did have in there, is I do have this certification for non-instructive testing. So we're back, MIR is back, it's certified, and good views in this, I would consider safe, so takes a lot of my ability with us, you know, having that in our back pocket. And then I also got a letter in there from Rick, Lamar and I explaining some of the problems they had with the truck. So basically, what happened was we kind of closed down that section of it, and they took the truck out, it was kind of ringing out, see what was going on. They road tested it, confirmed that repairs were good, also verified if there's any new items. And basically, what they found after they brought it out, is they found multiple air leaks, almost thirty thousand air leaks on any truck, the system they had to repair. System corroded, they found electrical systems toward the same time. As they got into it, they found a electrical system was broken. Now, like I mentioned above, they want the KME to get wiring drawings. Understand, this truck is twenty-seven years old, so nineteen ninety-seven, so twenty-seven years old, they could not get drawings for that specific truck. They had to actually go look at something similar, and they ended up actually going through and painting out the circuits, finding out what circuit was doing what. And that was kind of powder, because over the years, it's been happening, it's been worked on, and you know, you thought you had looked into the methods that was done. So then he spent a lot of time cleaning up and working through some wiring issues that they had. That was a big thing, we had multiple lighting issues, all the charging wasn't working, they had issues on the ladder when they were working the wiring. So that took a big chunk of time to get that done. The interesting one was, we had aerial chain that was worn and broken, that basically moves a turret, that got repaired. The other one that was interesting is they took the vehicle out, you got lost in half the tank, it quit running. Basically, it had corrosion in the tank, corrosion in the filter. So I'm like, well, we never saw that, because quite honestly, our truck probably never get low hanging. It's very rare that we get a truck that hits below a quarter tank, or a one-half tank, in kind of less reducing, it's kind of time on the scene. So we never saw it here, everybody took it out, they ran it to that level, because they found an issue, and that was a repair on the fuel tank. Then the other one they had too, was they parked it on a hill, the bridge was broke. You know, we chalk the wheel every time we go somewhere, and that's not the path where you want to address some issues. So they actually went through and they found that the brake was basically corroded here, and here we go. So they fixed all that as well. Five-engine oil filter, engineer filter, I'm sorry. Then the next step came in, they actually had it long enough where, gee, this thing's not good for pump testing, because you guys have had it for the bulk of the year. So let's go ahead and do the pump testing on it, which they do. So they did do it, they found a couple of things, this truck is sad for so long, not ran. They found a lot of issues in the pump, the seals, and the gasket, and whatnot. So that was all repaired as well. And then they did pump, retested pump, and it did pass. So that came, it's like the new voice is sixteen dollars a dollar, shot as soon as seventy-five dollars a dollar, it was bad, it was repairable. I'm just, I can't, the block I was having is, I can't stop halfway. Can't bring the truck back to half-finished back because it's useless. It's just something we're moving here. That's the case, we have to pull it off home or somewhere, because it's just going to fail. So that's how we got a bad company's operation on the side of the thing. We decided now I've got a ladder certified, I've got a pump certified, and a truck just repaired, and now we're back to normal main decisions.
Does anyone have any questions for you?
Have you guys done a bunch of testing yourselves since we've gotten the truck back?
Yeah, we've been using it.
And are happy with?
We're happy. There's just some major things I wanted to, and I'm happy with the repairs on the truck.
How often do you, could we go through complete service checkup? How often does your?
There are yearly things we have to do to the truck.
Is there, is there a time that each truck is serviced from the start?
Yeah, there's a year, it's gotta go through yearly, you know, certification, it goes yearly maintenance. So yeah, there are yearly things that have to do, depending on what it is, if it was, if this is normal yearly stuff, a lot of times it goes to GLN, because they can do, they can do your repair on the truck itself, if it was anything emergency was going down into a puddle, but the truck was having this puddle that's going through right now, and I really wanted to use it for work.
How does truck gets that far going before we have to it?
That's a question. That's a good question. But if you read the letter from our, that's, he explains that what they found when they got inside, that it didn't necessarily reflect it. I'm not pinpointing anybody saying whatever, the bottom line, it is where it was at when it was down and so on.
So now it's on yearly maintenance?
Yes, it's on yearly maintenance, and like the recommendations, and quite honestly, I probably will, probably go back to using our NAR. And the reason why is there are very few companies that do ladder work right now. Usually one of them, and the other one was down in Rosale, it was down in Elbow, and so the puddle was still there for years, but they got bought out, so there's been nothing but problems down there, so we're kind of staying out of it for a while. The other ones that worked in the truck before, so basically, seeing and reading, I'm not sure if they break that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I appreciate you, Claire, it makes sense now.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking back and forth, and that's like, it's like every week, would you find it?
Well, the last time we met, if we'd known this, it was a lie. I'm glad you followed it up.
I apologize, I said I was supposed to be here in the.
Oh, you're fine.
Intervention, my turn.
No, you're fine. You can't go around with Rosale though.
You're graduating.
Really?
Why didn't we go down there? We just said to go down there.
Yeah, that was good.
That's the heck we're at, that truck.
That is? I'll bet it is. Thank you, appreciate it.
So is there a motion to approve the repair bill?
So, I'll support it.
Well, I think we needed more direct, what we're supporting, and what we're actually passing.
I move to we pay the full repair bill, that's what it.
Okay. Roll call please. And how much is that? Do we know?
Yeah.
Seventy-five?
I'm, Stu's ready to just say everything's okay, so.
Yeah, you know what, that's good. We really do need the exact number. Do you have the exact number total?
Can you do it yourself with fifty-nine, three, sixty-eight, eighty-eight, plus sixteen?
Yep.
Eighty-four, eighty-nine?
But then Stu would have to revise it.
Yeah, he has to.
Do you want to revise your motion?
Any way you want it. You guys have three to do.
Okay.
You want to know the amount, please put the amount.
Okay, and the amounts we're putting in are, who's got it?
I do. The first one was fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. In invoice two, the care total was sixteen thousand, eighty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
A total of.
So your motion is to approve payment of health and welfare, okay. And so that was your revised motion, do you have a second still?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so now we need a roll call. Davis?
Yes.
Tannis?
Yes.
DeLuca?
Yes.
Stempian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Glau?
Yes.
Yaki?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, James. Next we have Pinkman, if you could help us with this a little bit.
Sure, absolutely. So at the previous meeting, I just provided a proposed adjustment fee in the last packet you can receive for tonight. I provided a little bit more context associated with how fees are sometimes structured, and some comparison communities, and how they do things differently. So I did want to take a second to make sure everyone's using the same terminology when it comes to essentially fees, and some community philosophy behind it. So some communities specifically choose to subsidize their fees to spur development in certain ways. That is a, there's not a right or not answer here. One thing that is very clear in state structures, you cannot make a profit off of processing applications. That's not our goal. It's not, we're not a business, we're a government. And so the goal of these fees is to cover costs based on review of their application that's triggered, because they are coming into our community, spurring this question or that development. And so that's most communities' philosophy. We want to cover some basic costs, but some communities choose to subsidize them out, which is why sometimes those administrative fees can be very different. So the four different structures that you'll see most common for fee structuring, is a flat fee, so it's a lump sum fee. Applicant walks in, they say, here's my review fee, this is the amount, and that's what they do. It's the easiest for when there's predictable fee incurred for that, and it's typically a regular source of income, so it's easy to moderate. There's also escrow, so that's when you get money upfront, and you work against it. And so that way, the cities right now is ten thousand dollars for a site plan review, you have that in front, you work against it. If you have two thousand left over, you give that back. So that's how escrow's component works. Invoicing, some communities usually have like a flat fee, and then as you maybe need additional reviews, then the community, as they get it from their consultants or subsidiaries, they then invoice the applicant, which is usually a month after the fact, because that's when your consultant incurs the fee, sends you a bill, and then you need a bill. So you're kind of playing bank, because you're kind of following that model trail. So it's typically a longer lag time and more administrative cost for it. And then the most common is some type of flat fee with escrow. That's the most common for site plan reviews, because it's really dependent on the quality of those plans when they come to a community, in which you have a flat fee amount, and you work against it. And if you don't work against it, no one's holding the bag, and we're not playing bank in a lot of ways. So those are the main types of fee structures. So we look at the current rate structures that you currently have. It is a, it is a little bit unique with some of the different numbers, like four oh five, and then four dollars per unit. They are lower than what you would see customary within a community that's of your size, as well as what current rates are. I don't believe the administration knows exactly when the last time the planning or review fee group evaluated. I don't have that answer, but from my understanding, it's been some time, so we've used over the last five years. And so all the costs have been reduced over the last five years, ten years. So I provided that proposed fee structure. The three communities I provided a comparison to is the city of LaPire. So the city of LaPire is a much larger community, they have more reviews that go through, but they utilize primarily a flat fee structure and then some escrow. They purposely choose as a community, I was involved in some of those. They purposely choose as a community, I was involved in some of those discussions when they updated their fee schedule a couple of years ago. They choose to subsidize their fees. Part of the reason is because they pay for an in-office staff person that does the plan reviews, that's their consultant. So that's where they take from their general fund to pay for that service and are willing to subsidize some of that. So that's why some of their numbers are a little bit different. That way you'll see some other communities sometimes too. The village of Elmont, um, they utilize primarily a fat fee and then escrow a lot of theirs. Now, they are south of you. They're a little bit smaller and they have typically fewer applications than you do regularly. I am also their planning consultant. So this is part of them being accustomed to what a typical fee structure is. So the flat fee pays for their administrative costs. But there's a public notice associated with it. That incurs a public hearing as opposed to the paper. Mailing with everyone within three and a half feet, which is quite a few postals, um, with communities with small block sizes. And then some level of organization with a community and then planning commission meetings as well. So not all communities charge applicants in addition for having a PC meeting or a ZBA meeting. And so that's one of the things that those three examples don't contribute to fees. Some communities do charge even a ten meeting, um, but either way. But they ask for a lot of their different fee structures, but they don't have to track several of those. So that's probably why they utilize that. So to increase that amount, that's primarily why they do that structure. So the flat fee pays for their administrative fee and the escrow pays for consultants. And then is high enough, they don't have to invoice later. Applicants typically give their money back in some extent. The last community that I provided a comparison for is the village of Lake Orion. So somewhat of a similar size. I think they're around what you probably process for reviews. They utilize a different consultant and they do a combination. They have a flat fee amount. They have some level of escrow for some of their different development fees. They don't cover any of the, they invoice their administrative costs, whatever that may be. And then have an escrow on top of that where that pays for the consultant fees primarily. So one of the things that is different between your last consultant and then wait trip coming on board is that we just reviewed differently. So one of the things that the previous firm did is they did time of materials. I was asked in the most recent Semedo to do it a long sum amount. So there's fixed, they can have fixed amounts for the wait trip as a variance review. And we do a site plan review and then it's half cost for additional second review. We have to do that. We can change it to a time of materials basis. That is no problem. But that's currently what the fee structure was adjusting to is part of it being a lump C situation rather than a time of material basis. Um, and so the conclusion is, is looking at those different, um, specific fees specifically for those. I restructured it to simplify your site interview process to be residential versus non-residential. Because if it's a dentist office or if it's a nonprofit, you have to go through the same exact process for reviewing everything. So it really is the same kind of time. We also supplied some of the variance components. We did give a discount for residents that specifically are asking for those variances as opposed to the other non-residents reviewing that. We provided a pre-application meeting that could be utilized. And then adding preliminary meetings that could potentially be utilized as well. The other big switch is we're proposing to change the escrow amount from ten thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. We have changed our review process internally. So we anticipate this will not creep up to that number for applicants. And have a better result in that sort of review processes. So with that, I'll turn it over. If you have any questions.
I have, um, something that you and I have talked about that now that I'm sitting on the planning commission, it has been a truly eye-opening experience as to how many times we seem to go over the same, um, issues. And, you know, all these folks up here are volunteers. All these folks from planning commission are volunteers. And so you're asking a lot to have the same people coming back over and over and, and tell them, this is what you need to do. And then you get about half of it done. And then you've got the same board meeting again. Um, and so you have a different process that you proposed. And so if you can explain that and the fees associated with that.
Sure. So the administrative process that we're changing is primarily intake. And so we've moved the intake to be about a month in advance. Part of the reason is we're doing an initial administrative review. So if you're engineering planner, we will review it, provide an initial financials. So these are all the things that are missing or compliance issue goes to the applicant. And about one week to turn that information around to us. And we say, did they do a good job in providing us what those answers are? So they should know ahead of time before you walk into the planning commission, I'm going to go for variance for these options. I'm going to simply add the information that's missing. Or I'm going to ask for the planning commission's discretion on this and I'm going to provide a rationale. One of the things I will be doing is gatekeeping. And so if it is, oh, I did two of the ten things that are outstanding and we need that info, they're not going to waste anyone's time. They're not going to be put on the agenda. You can resubmit again to have sufficient plans. And so that's our current process. So the second set of plans should be the ones that are going to the planning commission. We've already changed our documentation. So it clarifies that process at the front end. So applicants should not be surprised with this process. We try to outline that. We updated some of the components on the website. So that way you can show them on the table, this is what's going to happen. We know, we know walking in, we're going to have the one we turn around to address things. Which should make it so then you only have to go to one planning commission meeting, which is one month as opposed to going to two, three, four planning commission meetings. And that's worked in a lot of different communities. LaPire utilizes that process as well. And they find that they get better quality of plans. It's establishing a new standard. And it just moves more productively. And applicants actually spend less money because we're not orchestrating meetings for no purpose.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Yes, of course. City manager has looked at this, I'm sure. Is this a viable system versus where we changed it? We've changed some things. I think it's saving us some money. I'm not sure it really is.
Again, uh.
Your opinion is all I'm really asking for.
And we've had a couple of incidences, a few in the last, uh, last few months where the applicant came to the meeting and was basically totally unprepared. And we, we spent hours there and made no headway. This is going to be much more efficient. And, um, with them doing a free review, it's not going to be resting behind the planning commission or the zoning board, appeals, any of their time. It'll be much more efficient.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion in regard to adopting the new fee schedule?
Where's the wording? Verbage? Is it on there? Or just, is that all you want? Because I'll give it.
No, no one has had a word. No one has had a word.
We have, we have the proposed new fee schedule that with the changes in red.
Over here?
Yeah.
Thirty-six, thirty.
Yes. I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the effective zip of, it's it right here in the CTA's planning and zoning. All the, uh, red line, is that what it is?
The red line check.
Red line.
Because everything else that is not red.
Stay the same. Okay.
So you could make a motion to be that you are adapting the fee schedule as presented for the planning and zoning fee schedule. And then put today's date as the effective date. Is there a motion now?
So moved.
So moved. No, seriously, I wanted the right verbiage, but I, I have to agree, the municipalities that I work with within the industry I'm in, those that have a gatekeeper, checks and balance, you go to a meeting, you're done.
Yeah.
Now, you might not be approved. You might have to have an addition, but it wasn't their fault. It saves time. It really does. Not knows what he's doing, but a lot of people don't. So they don't dot the i's and cross the t's. So, yeah, I like it. I like it a lot.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Why don't we do a roll call? Loam?
Yes.
Sifian?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Maluka?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yeah.
Yaki?
Yes, thank you.
So 10A, discussion of disposal of assets. Anything with that?
We, um, we have a, as, as Mr. Blomke assessed to, we have an interested party with the one fifty, um, Ben Cross, the hot building, the DDA building. The current tenant, there's notification that she'll be out by the end of now. And we have an interested party who wants to buy that building. But they are asking if they can buy, you know, there's the building and then there's parking lot. The parking lots, the cities, and that's municipal parking. They're asking if we have any interest in selling some of that parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah. It, it might not have to be a part of the original deal. They just wanted to verify. I'm out with Nathan Hager this morning, his assessor. He verified how much land there was. He gave me what he believed that the tax structure would be. That's the two first questions that the potential purchaser wanted. And then the third would be, he would like to expand the building if it didn't have enough land. So everything around it, it's basically four, it, the size of the building and the four parking spots on the west side of the building are, that's all the lot is. It's owned by the city, which is overseen by the DDA. And he'd like to purchase, I believe, to the south about as much property, which goes right up to Tom Biganowski's building that I've got listed as well. So once we find out if he's really interested, we could put a plan together to possibly purchase more land so he could expand that property when he wants to.
I guess what I'm asking right now is, is are you, are you open to looking at that? Or is absolutely not, we're not selling any of that parking lot? If there is, we need to tell the general right now.
Yeah.
If, if we, if we are willing to consider, we can tell them to submit it on.
I can only tell you by, if you could see it, I didn't know it was going to be on the thing tonight. If you could see what he's talking about, it's the old Secretary of State's building. The property directly to the south would not, in my opinion, impact the city at all other than put more tax dollars into the budget because it's just a pass-through. There's no more parking and they cut grass. If anything, the city pays to cut the grass and take care of the little, it's the way it's shaped. If I find a known, I'd have brought an overview, but, uh, yeah, it's, there's no additional parking he's asking for because next to where in front of the building is to the south, it's not any parking. There's a little driveway that goes to the south of the building that is grass. So if, if it was me, I'd just say, yeah, absolutely. But it's not me. But it wouldn't impact the city as far as sometimes we think, well, we need more parks and rocks or whatever because there's no land. This would not affect it in any way, shape or form.
Again, if you're willing to consider it, as an option, we can have a map brought in.
Yeah, I could bring it in next week and have it in the plan.
And you can actually see what we're talking about.
Yeah. I can tell them, I can tell them if they're just considering it, they'll look at it next meeting. His biggest question is, he really wants the building. How much land do I get with the building? And I found that out. So I'll talk to him tomorrow.
I moved it to Florida. Craig is at, a building owned by the city.
Yes.
And it's our building.
Yes.
It's the DDA.
It's the DDA.
It's a DDA.
For the incubator.
Yes, yes, exactly.
See, what the DDA wants to do is if they sell that, they want to purchase another property downtown Inlay City, improve it, do the same thing. Sell that building once they get it occupied, take that money and put it into another property, which is a great idea. Because we have a lot of vacancies that just aren't improved. And so, yeah, it's owned by the DDA, overseen by the DDA. It's not under the tax law.
Well, I, I think that it would be great that the DDA sold it. But I think that it would be great too if they would consider using the funds for completing our DPW building.
Uh, well, okay. I'm on the DDA, so I can respond to that. The DDA and the city have each voted at this point to contribute a hundred thousand dollars each towards the DPW building.
Yeah, they're already doing it.
That's for the completion.
And so, well, that's, that is what they vote, we were trying to get a grant. And we were not able to get a grant that we thought we were probably going to get. So what happened is that in order to report the DPW building, as both the city and the DDA each basically said, we will spend up to a hundred thousand dollars. It could cost more than that. We may have to figure out what we're going to do. We may have to figure out if we're not going to do everything right now on the interior. So there's a lot of questions out there, but the funds have already been, um, basically set aside. So just to let you know.
Well, my concern is that things aren't, uh, aren't going to get cheaper. I think that we need to complete that project. Even if we have to go take a vote and go to the general fund and complete the project. But I don't think that we should be holding back on some of the things that need to be done.
Okay. Let me, let me just say one thing. So the building is owned by the DDA. So the DDA is the one who would decide if they're going to sell it or not. But I think for tonight, all the question is.
That's all.
You're looking to see whether people in general would like to bring it back and, and have some votos and things so we can actually see what we're talking about.
Well, that is just a suggestion. That was my suggestion. It's got nothing to do with this commission.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let the potential purchaser know exactly what y'all said, that they're going to consider. If we could bring it back next week, show you pictures. I think all that Craig was saying was, would you consider it? So I think we need to have that data and run it, listen to pictures.
Great.
But it's only my opinion. I think you'll see next week or in two weeks that it would be an enhancement if they go that route. I just hope they buy the building.
Okay. All right. So I think, I think that there's the answer. So moving on to Chief Selby with the Circuit Court.
Mayor, good evening. Goodbye, May. Just like to take a moment to recognize an officer for some actions done on duty on May. It's Officer Robert Velasco. And this is a great story. Sunday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, which was Father's Day, approximately thirteen, ten hours in the morning at the four hundred block of West First Street in Inlay City. Fifty-five-year-old Inlay City man was reportedly having a cardiac arrest. Unconscious and not breathing at his home. Within minutes, Officer Robert Velasco arrived at the home as the first responder and quickly deployed the AED, Automatic External Defibrillator, on the resident. Officer Velasco prepared the patient with the AED, set up and delivered one shock as requested by AED. The shock immediately restored the heartbeat rhythm to the patient and Officer Velasco stabilized the man until the Pire County EMS arrived. By the EMS arrival, air med crews had prepared one additional AED shock, rendered further aid and propped the man for transportation to McLaren, LaPire, Ohio. Fifty, the fifty-five-year-old Inlay City man is alive today, will enjoy a life with his family because of the quick response of Officer Velasco. Training and professionalism that Officer Velasco exhibited on June fifteenth. The family, residents and city and police department are grateful and proud of the quick action of Officer Robert Velasco. I'd like to present Officer Velasco to this commendation. Please shout out.
The chief not done.
And Chief, it's the current, we can say go to the police department instead of putting police on the back, put cop. It's only three words.
Save a little bit on ink, right? So, Madam Mayor, my, my second, uh, issue tonight is the request for Circuit Court. Myself and code enforcement Officer Cottrell have been dealing with the issue, as you're aware of, in your packet there for the past two years in the building of downtown. And I'm sure you're familiar with the address and the owner of that business by the listing in your packet there. And the timeline of events that now brought us to this situation here. What we have is a situation where we were dealing with, uh, issues of fire code and flight in the district court level. And at the request of. And after the request of the judge at the district court level and upon the suggestion of counsel for the city, Seabird Goloski, we have, I have been asked to come to you tonight to ask, to make a motion to enter into a circuit court action against said building owner for a verified complaint of injunctive relief against the building owner for state local fire codes and light violations.
All right. Does anybody have questions? I'm looking for a motion, but I mean, if people have questions, they certainly ask questions. But other than that, I would be looking for one.
Chief, why would you need a motion for that? If it's in violation, it's in violation.
That's correct, but it is the city in effect holding a building owner that has real property in, in a form of contempt. And they could lose the rights to have that property still kept inside the business. And so we might be depriving somebody of their business assets inside as a result of the betterment of the downtown because there are fire codes violations. And we can't do that unless we can ensure they're ordered. So we're asking for injunctive relief. I'm not an attorney, but I think I just kind of sounded like one, basically.
You did.
What? Based on what we've been advised to do through our counselor, Seabird, you are. This is next level. Now, it may not have to go to the level of actually going through the circuit court process, but we have to get it in the hospital right now to be able to have leverage to take it to that next level. As the fire chief has also been with myself and Code Enforcement Officer Cudjhar through this whole process. And in June 2016, there was a bad fire in the downtown and myself and the fire chief do not want that to happen again.
So it's been going on since May 13th, 2024, with the first violation?
Yes, and I'm sure that people can attest that it's been going on longer than that as well.
That's just the first notice?
Right, that's just the first notice. And again, I would say it to them face, we want to look for compliance.
They're just not compliant?
They're not. We'll make a personal effort to go and talk to them face-to-face. We will red-tag them. We will issue a last red-tag warning. And at that point, now it starts the violation process. And technically, that violation process should be a ten-day period. And we more than offer fairness in the two years that we've given this building owner to take care of this problem, which could be everybody else's problem, first and foremost, myself and the fire chief.
Any other questions?
I'd like to argue the verbage.
I might, I might suggest.
That's why I have the word.
You could, could you just word that you approved the circuit court request for pages fifteen and eighty-eight? So, I don't know. That's what says right there.
Here you go. I'll make a motion. I move that we allow the city attorney, Christine Anderson, to pursue the verified claim for injunctive relief against Teresa Carter Crystal Horners Inc. for state local fire code and light violations.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Four.
Okay, we'll go first. Sefian?
Yes.
Salupa?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Teyanis?
Yes.
Loeb?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yaki?
Yes.
All right. Citizens on the floor, is there anyone who would like to come up and make a statement? Okay, seeing none. So we did not have a closed session, correct? Okay, so the answer for...
Two things that we want to bring to your attention. One, we passed out this letter. You should have this on the front of your... We felt that due to the number of closures City Hall's had because of the pavement and the security risk, people coming into the parking lots with the semi, et cetera, et cetera, that we'd like to extend the deadline for the water bill payments. They're due on the 10th. We'd like to give them an extra five days just in case anybody had any, any issues with getting into the building. So that's what this letter is. So I can share this with, with the newspapers and perhaps, hey, you know, we'll put this on the Facebook page and webpage. Just let everybody know we have a...
You don't need to go back.
Okay, mine is morning. Can I give them one?
That's what I think we should do. And, and lovely for you guys to see that.
Just get a little more interest. At least that we use it to...
And the other thing is, as you see, we're, we're in the first phase, the exterior phase of this building, in the repair and maintenance of this building. And you know, we've discussed the phases for the interior section. And a, a number of people have approached us prior to us indulging in the second phase, the interior side of that. Discussion has come up with both the county and the city to basically work something out with the senior center to swap buildings. Where we moved the senior center over here, they had their own building, their own parking lot, all their own issues over here. We moved the city hall functions over to the Lam Steel Building and therefore we'd be consolidating city services. We'd be in there with the police department, EMS, all of our offices would be over there. We'd be close to the pool. The cameras are already on the parking lot and surrounding buildings. And we just think it would be a more efficient thing. I know that there, there might be some public concerns, so basically what, if you're willing, I'd like to have or announce a public hearing to discuss that issue. And let the public come in and tell us, yes, it's a great idea, or no, we don't want you to do that because of this.
How's the square footage?
That building's a, a little bit bigger.
It's bigger than this one?
Yeah, yeah. But again, you know, they have the large center room. That would, that would be the chamber. And then, you know, the offices are, are more or less to the east and to the south. And the kitchen was to the, to the north and east.
How's the security on that versus this?
Well, the police are right above, so we can, we can power the floor.
I feel you're worse with the other.
They gotta run upstairs.
As these departments, security, well, the other way around. Armed security for this.
I guess my question would be, are they going to improve all of the areas and offices and new roof and parking lot before we trade?
Over there?
Yeah. I know, I'm just kidding.
They still are building, so we have to...
Well, we, we're just getting done with this one and...
Well, again, they just got a new HBC over there, so...
I, I think we should look into it. I think it's a great idea to have all the cities and municipalities get into one.
I like that.
I like that. It's at least worth the stuff.
So we'll, we'll draft up a public announcement to have people come in. Before we get any further, I'll, I'll have additional communications with the county to make sure that there's no projections. I actually had discussion with these prior public health director, Kathy Askins, and she was all for it. She thought it'd be great, be a lot easier for them to maintain this building and services because they have a lot of unused office space over there. Again, I, I think we have to do some work on that building to make it work for the utility builder and the county, the county of work.
We're going to reduce it anyhow.
Right, right, exactly. So if, if that's all right, we'll, we'll put together a public hearing and bring that to you guys to approve and we'll go for that. Those are the issues I had.
Okay. All right. So, Commissioner Tyler?
I want to thank all of our important hats for all, everybody all coming out, all of our wonderful officers here who are definitely wonderful, great work in this community. They're really making quite a difference out here. And just, you know, we hear all the news going out here. I love that our city's coming back. We're seeing some really great changes, some really great things happening. So, you know, I'm just blessed to be part of it a little bit that I am. So just thank you, everybody else.
I'd like our contracts in the future to have a time limit, like not millennia's, like weeks or months to get a job done.
I will make sure Ed includes those in his building constructions. It makes sense.
Uh, let's see. Okay, there was a couple of humor out of town. You mind or anything? Edison is going to replace the pole in the back corner by the train tracks. That is actually train, grand trucks pole. They're going to replace it because it's old.
You did tell me that.
Okay. And I should have, we should have another meeting because I'll try to... To go underground from where the pole is to that pole and then go into the new building and then let make all the wires in front of the building. So we need to have another meeting just to keep everybody updated, what's going on down there, what the figures are to do this, so...
How quickly do you think you need that? This weekend?
We can do this time this, this weekend. We have a meeting, hold everybody together and, you know...
That would make sense.
And Scott came out last night and he took the meter, the pole wire is dead. There's no electric in the pole wire no more. It's all been disconnected. It's time to pull it out. Yeah, so everything's coming together. We're going to take the last garage door down, actually. Add a, or a door is coming in to take the last overhead door down. Then there won't be no more overhead doors that I got. But the doors are ready to be put in. We just aren't quite ready for them, so... Everything's coming together.
So you'll be done by the 15th?
When's the 15th?
First, too, you gotta, you gotta have a timeline.
And put the year at the end, too. I think I'm pretty good at that. I'm going tomorrow night. I'm back home.
I'd love to be here.
I've been gone for a whole month. I'm back home. You have home?
You're fine.
It's still there.
Joe, do you have anything?
Yes, I recommend the police fire EMS, PPW, especially for the exhausting amount of hours they put in extra at the dispatching fair. So I think they have success. So, thank you for that.
Tom?
Citizens, thank you so much for coming out once in a while and sharing your time.
Great. Certainly want to just say that Officer Velasco, so much is, is, I'm so appreciative of his efforts. It could have been that we would have lost one of our citizens if not for his best action. So very, very appreciative of him. Yep, that's true, on Father's Day. Everybody, don't forget about Summer Fest. It's this weekend. Starts Friday at six. It's going to go Friday, Saturday and Sunday this year. Lot of great events, lot of stuff going on.
And fireworks.
Fireworks.
Yeah, and the, and the parade is on Saturday at six. So hopefully everybody will come down and visit. And that's it. So is there a motion for her?
Yes.